I pledge allegiance to the President of the United States of America. And to the very public who stands by his side in this hall.
Danny David.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Will T.
Here.
Friend Simmons. Craig Scott.
Any, any additions or corrections? And then free public comment, is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? And for fiscal year 2024 budget draft?
Okay, in front of you, you could have three documents. One of them is revised general fund draft twenty four. The second one is a revised special fund draft for twenty four. I'm going to work off from the shorter or the thinner document, the one that's the draft for your 2024 budget index of adjustments. And what I'll do is walk through the changes that were made from your previous drafts, so you can track those. And each one of these changes that you'll see in this index has the line item number identified. You will be able to get into the larger document and you'll see I noted in yellow that same lines. You can actually find it in the larger document if you want to take that deep of a dive into it. So you can see exactly how the different additions and subtractions are working. This proposal has a very thin surplus of thirty thousand three hundred and twelve dollars to it. It does track with what we've discussed in the past about reducing our staffing at the jail and making some movements with some of our law enforcement from the general funds to the road patrol mileage fund. But there have been a few other things that have happened since we last met that I will highlight as we walk through this. We'll start right at the top of the index. Very first thing that you see is an increase of fifteen thousand dollars. And friend of the court central services, this is a result of our cost allocation plan that we do each year. And this is kind of like a mini audit that goes through our organization and finds out whose time is being spent where. And in the case of friend of the court, some of these, some of this time is reimbursable. In this case, with the different departments that are involved in some of the friend of the court central services category, justify the increase of fifteen thousand in revenue. So that change is incorporated. Next one, the administration, as you know, Kelly has submitted her resignation effective at the end of the month. That next following week starts the fiscal year. This proposal does not include fulfilling that position, so that will all be subtraction expense. Under county general, looking at where we are right now on our postage. And this, remember, last year we consolidated a lot of the individual lines into the single line. It worked out quite well to be able to track where our postage is, but looking at what was originally budgeted and where our trends are right now, a reduction of seventy five hundred to that line. In the treasurer's office, there is some movement. We had a resignation there as well, so a new hire coming in would be coming in at a lower rate. This also includes a reclassification of the part-time person to an L three as is allowed in the steelworker agreement. The total net is the savings about forty seven hundred dollars over what we originally had proposed. And equalization is just a line item being renamed. Local unit contributions for clerical is titled something else that was not clear at all. Under elections, very small. A little workers' cap on social security. Building and grounds, there is a line item there for carpet replacement. I believe it's something like ten thousand dollars this last year. I'm not sure we've even spent a thousand out of that, but that was a candidate for reduction. In probate court, a reduction of twelve thousand to reflect decreased expenditure for discontinued JIS fee. That's some software that was used in that department, but that will no longer be charged in twenty four. I mentioned at the last couple of meetings about moving the software purchase for the prosecuting attorney. This one time purchase for the new, you know, name escapes me. It's Keflar, but I know that's not right, but anyway, seventy five thousand dollar reduction there. Now, one of the first large ones in the sheriff's office. These reductions are all related to moving the one lieutenant position over to the road patrol mileage fund. And you want to point one item out. When we get to the jail and the corrections agreement, the secretary for the sheriff's office is actually in the corrections unit and is a relatively new hire. It would normally have to then be because of the way the seniority works for layoffs. We normally have to be one of the persons that was let go simply for lack of seniority. But the contract for corrections, where it talks about the order of layoffs. The very next sentence is this section is not applicable to posts and secretarial classifications. So that fortunately saved the secretary from just a kind of a outsider looking in layoff. She doesn't obviously forget corrections and it's indirectly related. And the sheriff frankly needs a secretary, so we're able to do that with the contract language that's written. So everything that you see here as far as these dollars being moved out of the sheriff's office. It's not actually losing anybody, but it's moving one position over to the road patrol mileage. The next two are our school resource deputies. We are moving twenty five percent of their expense to the road patrol mileage. This reflects really the summer when they're not in school. They are actually working in the sheriff's office, so it's just a real bit accounting thing as far as work going on on the ground, you really wouldn't notice it, but it's just the accounting for the positions themselves.
You have totals for each one of that?
Pardon me?
You have totals for each one of those?
If you want to add those up.
Me too, okay.
Do that.
All right.
It's in the twenty thousand dollar range for each one of them. The next item is in the tether program, talking to the under sheriff. They are restarting the work release program with tether and is estimated is that that would bring in eight thousand dollars of additional revenue. So that's included. The next one, the three fifteen activity, the secondary road patrol. This is the grant that we receive from the state each year. Now this year, twenty four, we're anticipating sixty four thousand, seven hundred fifty four dollars. This entire activity would be moved over to the road patrol mileage so that grant dollars would come out of the general fund and would apply to the road patrol mileage, so would the expenses. And you'll see that when we get down that part, that you'll be able to pinpoint exactly what is secondary road grant related with that three fifteen number tied to each one of those lines. Under marine, snowmobile and ORV. What's concerning here was with any sign of a layoff that might happen, first place that we are required to go in terms of our collective bargaining agreements is our part-time employees. But there's a little bit of a nuance. Contracts talk about regular part-time employees. And in the case of these officers, they would be called temporary or seasonal employees. They are exempt from any kind of layoff order. So the language actually says that temporary and seasonal employees are not subject to the terms of the collective bargaining agreement. But what that means is when it comes to these, these particular activities, particularly marine, snowmobile and ORV in the updated position allocation list, we've actually broken out so you can see how many there are. But because they're temporary seasonal and classification, they aren't in, in order for any kind of a layoff. So the sheriff will still have that group of employees available. This does unfortunately capture the regular part-time employee. But at least for the seasonal type activities, staffing level that the sheriff has now can be maintained. I did want to point out in the snowmobile patrol grant from Dow. That money actually came in and was deposited with the treasurer already. So that's going to be recorded in fiscal year twenty three and not twenty four. So that revenue has been moved out. The challenge, I think now for the sheriff's office is to get those monies committed before the end of the current fiscal year, so we don't have any bleed over. Now, if it did happen, we'd figure something out to account for it. That grant, you might recall from the resolution that was approved, was not supposed to be here until December. And so that's why it was originally programmed for twenty four, but it showed up early. It's been deposited and so, you know, we'll just have some other hoops to jump through to make sure we account for that correctly. Now with corrections, the very first thing that you see is that million dollar reduction in revenue. This is a reflection of the Gladwin County decision. And also the additional fifty thousand, we had budgeted originally three hundred thousand to come in from the Oscoata County inmates. That's trending more closely to two fifty, a more comfortable programming than at two fifty than three hundred. If it does come in higher, that's great, but two fifty is a comfortable number, at least from this vantage point. The next several lines are dealing with the reduction in force. And in this case, to balance this budget, this, this means five correction officers that are scheduled for the reduction. You did receive an email from me on Friday, just a few things that I wanted to go over with you as far as how this will likely work. Our initial, or the analysis, the staffing analysis that we're working off from now that was actually done in twenty nineteen and reported out in twenty twenty one was based on an average daily population of ninety four inmates. This last year we were at seventy two, the year before we were slightly under, one of those years during COVID, we were in the sixties. We're not coming to even ninety four or even the one hundred forty four that we're rated for right now. So the philosophy being that if we are not housing that many inmates, we should not necessarily staff for that many inmates. If we're not having that many come in, we should probably reduce our staff then to more accurately reflect the number of inmates coming in. Now, there's, that's a very simple calculation. There's a lot more to it than that as far as the analysis and the staffing levels go. For instance, we need to get into the inmate classifications and what types of remains we handle and how we handle them and so on. So there's, there's a lot more that goes into it. When we talked to the Department of Corrections last Friday, the DOC representatives response to the philosophy here was, and I'm quoting, I don't know that you're wrong. But his hesitance was he's not had to do an analysis to reduce numbers in the past. He's always done them to increase numbers. So he's kind of hedging his bets a little bit because he doesn't quite know exactly what this is going to entail. But he did recommend, and I suggest pretty strongly that we submitted a letter to DOC to do an updated analysis based on this philosophy of capping our total number of inmates coming in. That would require a letter signed by the board chair and the sheriff. But we would also have to get in line behind two other counties. It's looking like probably after January one before they can get in here and actually do the analysis. In the meantime, obviously they know what we're contemplating right now. That could constitute an unscheduled visit, an unscheduled analysis, which I say bring it on. We need this done as soon as we can so that we know if we're going to be able to operate within what the Department of Corrections expects. There are specific rules they have to follow as well. There's a statute that calls for only one corrections officer per level. That obviously is not practical in our case, but that's their minimum to start with. So what they would do with that analysis is take into account the layout of the facility and the classification system we have, a number of other operational concerns. But in the meantime, we have to balance the budget before the end of the month. So that's the proposal right now is the reduction of five staff members. A couple of other items that's in here. The medical expense, when we signed the agreement to do the medical care for the inmates, the medical contract, we actually added twenty hours of nursing time onto that contract. This proposal would reduce that and actually just take that option out, continue the medical contract, but just not any longer go along with the additional hours of the nursing staff. I appreciate that that's something that's, I think, has worked out quite well. But when we're looking at the budget situation that we are right now, it's, it just seems to make sense. The one that talks about the out county inmate medical expense, that should be removed so that fact should, should come out of there. What I originally did was went through
Number's going to come up.
That's three fifty one, eight thirty five, seven hundred out of county inmate. That expense likely will still be there, but one of the scenarios I plugged in was what if we removed us go to county contract and just didn't accept any other inmates and only dealt with our own. But the bottom line is the revenue that it brings in right now really does have an impact on our ability to operate the facility in what I would call a fiscally responsible manner. Cutting it out, yes, it was out some of the expenses of that revenue that's brought, brings in between two hundred fifty, two hundred eighty thousand a year. At this point, there really isn't any reason to discontinue that unless we're going to simply go to a lockup. And I'll talk about that in a second.
Then on top of that commissary funds for those.
Right, yeah. And I'm going to get into that here in a second with the other scenario. So that's very true. If we didn't have those, I believe we're committed on the contract, a minimum of eighteen beds. If we lose those, we lose the commissary that comes with it. Next one is a small increase in revenue from animal control. This is the boarding care of dogs. Fee that we pay to the race shelter to bring dogs in. But in many cases, animal control is able to identify the owner of the dog. And when that's the case, they're able to bill the dog's owner for the expenses that we would otherwise pay out. And they're estimating at about eighty five hundred dollars of revenue that that would generate. And the appropriations, there was a slight upward adjustment, really a inflationary adjustment to our commitment to the state grant of twenty six hundred seven dollars. And so that's plugged in, but some of the larger ones, the contingency line is reduced by fifty thousand dollars. There's still twenty five thousand dollars in there for unforeseen activities that may come up. But that's a reduction anyway that was necessary to balance this budget. The amount that was originally programmed in for the jail bond debt was a little high, so that's been reduced. We did double check that with the interest and the principal payments that are due in the coming year. We are pretty solid on that number. The childcare fund actually needed an additional fifty thousand dollar increase just to reflect the trends that they're experiencing in that fund. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. The next two, the BSNA software line and then the network hardware and software line, those are pretty substantial reductions, but based on the trends that we're seeing in both cases. One of the things that's skewing the trend is a couple of years ago, we actually purchased the BSNA software. So that really inflated the line for that year. So the averaging is skewed a little bit. And with the network hardware and software, again, it's getting down to, you know, things that we actually buy in the hardware that we buy and the software upgrades. Looking at those trends that I'm pretty comfortable in that number being reduced. On the road patrol mileage fund, we pretty much covered everything that's in here. It does include moving a lieutenant over to this fund to accommodate that though, unfortunately, we lose three of our lower seniority deputies in the process. The second half of that grouping, you'll see all the two fifty nine, three fifteens. And that's that road patrol state grant that we received and the expenses that go with that, that being programmed in.
What do you mean by lower, decreasing three lower seniority deputies? What does that mean?
Make this, this work, moving the lieutenant over and moving the road patrol grant position over to the road patrol mileage fund. There unfortunately displaces three deputies that we currently have on the roster to make room for that. And that's the actual number of people, particularly in the summertime, is actually the same. And you can see that the actual reduction in the, in the pay is only about forty eight thousand, but bringing over the lieutenant is a fairly high dollar item. And the grant from the road patrol from the state only covers about half of the expense for that officer. So the officers are here, but unfortunately there are three, again, just going by the contract itself. We have to go from the last hired and work our way up. So that's, that's three that we've recently hired that would end up having to be laid off to accommodate that moves.
Just so I understand correctly, it's because when we move the lieutenant position over to the road patrol mileage, there's no funds to support the three or the three other deputies, correct?
Right. The next item is the correction officer training fund. This budget proposes moving the training line out of the three fifty one, out of the corrections, general fund activity and using corrections officer training fund for all the training. And there is a fund balance in there that helps cover those costs.
What's the fund balance?
You know? It is in handout.
Okay.
Something I had, I couldn't tell you, but there's a gray bar at the bottom of each of the special funds that'll tell you what that fund balance.
Okay.
The next item is the indigenous defense fund. Again, we've already found about that, a substantial increase in the revenue from the state this coming year of two hundred thirty thousand dollars. And then the transfer I'd already mentioned for the county, our support for that. The American Rescue Plan, this again is the attorney prosecuting attorney software being moved over to the ARPA fund. Childcare fund that mentioned earlier about an increase in the county allocation. And you can see the increase in expenditure and that's the state board charge back line. And this again is the, the best estimate of what their childcare fund will need to accommodate that in the coming years. The next one is the jail bond payment fund, which I already mentioned, the adjustment in the principal, the interest that ends up in savings seventeen thousand, seven hundred. And finally, the transit fund, the original draft that you saw did not include the mileage revenue. That's now in there and you can see that again, that the transit fund is pretty well balanced on its own with the fund balance it has. Well, that's the tour. If you want to just for a second, talk about the option that was discussed at our last meeting about what would happen if we just, instead of doing a full-fledged jail, just in a lockup and moved our inmates. While the process of working the details, there's a lot of talk, making adjustment on one line and impacts two or three other lines later on. So going through all of that, but the initial review, and this is again, just back of the napkin type math at this point. I have no idea really what it means as far as staffing to do a lockup versus a full-fledged jail. Taking the best estimate at that, you know, it's potential to save another one point one million in staffing costs. But then we're going to also have to increase our housing expense. If we just did fifty inmates a day at thirty five dollars a day, that's a six hundred fifty thousand dollar expense that we don't have now. That has to be added back in. We would then obviously lose our revenue from Oscoata County, so about another two hundred fifty thousand. And then the loss of commissary, probably two hundred twenty, two hundred fifty thousand dollar range. So right now it actually works out because of those losses to be a little bit more expensive to go to the lockup route. But this is before any professional eye has looked at in terms of the staffing level that's needed for a lockup. I'm sure I'm, I've estimated that, you know, we estimated keeping more staff than maybe it would be needed for a lockup. But I don't know that, that's not my area of expertise by any stretch. But other expenses that I know that we would have would include our transport on call employees, the fuel that would be needed to transport inmates back and forth from another facility. And probably vehicle maintenance would go up as well. So those are still items that I'm working on. I, I don't suggest that we go that route like right now. That's just, this, this budget will take us down to, you know, the staffing level that I believe is consistent with our inmate population. It also phases it in over thirty days. So you'll have, there are some expenses obviously with that, but the phase in, I think, rather than just saying on October one, that's what we're doing. That's just not going to work. This will give everybody time to take a breath, really look at this, make adjustments accordingly, put the plan in place and move forward. But we should continue to look at this. When we have DOC up here, we can really talk to them at length about what does it mean to do a lockup and really get down to the fine tooth or the, you know, sharpened pencil arithmetic to find out that that's really something that we should consider or not. One expense I know we're going to have, no matter what, will be that bond payment. And that will continue through twenty thirty five, I believe it is. So, you know, that's just one, it's just a factor that's there. That's where things stand right now. As I said, each one of these line item adjustments you can see is highlighted in the larger documents too. So if you need to go back and see just exactly how that worked, you can hook and connect the dots. And any questions that you have?
With, with these individuals that we're talking about laying off, was it figured in this budget that we're going to have to pay their unemployment?
It is unlikely, that's where that surplus ends up going. I am pretty confident that these employees are very employable, so hopefully it'll be a short stay on unemployment as well, but yes.
Where's that line item?
The surplus?
Yeah.
You go down to the, on the general fund budget, in the very bottom.
In this version here?
No, it's on the, that document right there.
Okay.
Right on the bottom of that front page, you see the surplus.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah.
It's going to cost us for how many individuals to lay off? Do you have figured out?
Oh, that's, I do, eight.
For how many months is that?
Twenty. Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks, correct?
Twenty weeks.
That's right.
I think that's right, too. Understanding that's the max, my weeks.
Cause we dropped that unemployment, correct, is, is what I did a little research. Unfortunately, I didn't receive any information that I requested, but I did a little research and we dropped that unemployment that we were paying a hundred and sixty two dollars per employee per year.
Per year?
That we were paying and we decided to stop paying that. And that's why we have to pay this if, if we unemployed, if we lay anybody off, is this correct?
Right. Yes.
Can you, can you recap that? Cause I don't recall that.
Well, discussion happened quite a while ago and it's over a year ago. We were involved in a dispute with the unemployment insurance agency over some of our volunteers. They classified as employees and they wanted to collect additional fees from us to cover them as employees. As we're going through that process, and you may recall a conversation with our county attorney on this. We learned that we were one of only two counties in the state that was paying into unemployment rather than doing it on a, I forget what the terminology is, but rather than doing it on a as needed basis, I guess, for lack of another word. Right, so we talked about that and the change was made, gosh, I want to say maybe a year ago. This is the first year that it actually was in place. And that, that's a lead up to it, so.
Well, you looked at the track record, I remember the conversation. We looked at our track record, how many did we lay off in the last few years? And there just wasn't any.
It was, it was a conversation committee of the whole, but I, is that something that we typically would, would, would vote on? Cause I don't recall a resolution and I looked and I didn't see one.
Yeah, I'm not sure we did a resolution on that.
Okay. My next question is decreasing the staffing, it, what's the, how does that increase our liability? Or what does it do for our liability?
Yeah, it's potentially would increase our exposure. But that's a, you know, that's the first thing that DOC said, you know, you reduce your numbers, you increase your exposure. Well, yeah, there's risk in doing all this and jail business is quite risky.
So has anybody reached out to our, our insurance?
They have not yet.
To find out if this is something that we can even do, if, if they're going to allow this or?
No, they'll allow it. The only thing they might do is say, well, this is a higher risk, we have to increase your rates.
Or they could possibly drop us?
That's always a possibility. I don't think that's likely, but that's, it's possible.
So, so basically if we do a reduction of five corrections officers, we're just rolling the dice for compliance, because we, we really just don't know until they do the announce.
Right.
It's a big roll of dice, Tim.
It is. Okay, so we don't do anything with the jail at all. What are we going to do?
It is. Hey, I, I still have some more questions before we get to that, but go ahead.
Okay. No, go ahead.
Um, I, I did a little bit of questions, some things that we have made some decisions on in the past years or year and a half anyways. It was supposed to save us some money and, and I'm shocked. Or year and a half anyways, it was supposed to save us, um, some money and, and I'm shocked by some of these numbers and I'm shocked that nobody. I, I guess it brought awareness to these numbers, um, when was our legal fees? Uh, I looked back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, our legal fees was, which I'm sure that there's more to this story. I, I didn't do any research on this. This number was ten thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two was fifty-four thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars. And twenty twenty-two to current with another round is forty-two thousand thirty-one dollars. And that's not including the lawsuits. Cost that his, his also went up pretty significantly, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, fifty-two thousand, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Fifty-nine thousand, twenty twenty-two to current sixty-seven thousand. And we switched legal teams, you know, we were, we were thinking that it was going to save us some money. Some other areas that we were thinking was gonna save us some money was on the medical contract, um. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one was a hundred and sixty thousand, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, a hundred fifty-nine thousand, with another round yet to go. It's looking like a hundred and seventy-four thousand, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, I estimated, uh, it's gonna be about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Then went from one sixty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to one seventy-nine with, uh. With the thoughts that we were actually gonna save some money there. The other thing is, is, is we did some, uh, uh. Food and I know food costs have, have went up, this is just some, some thoughts that crossed my mind and I did some requests for some numbers, food for the jail. Tw- cause we, we, uh. Cooks, we, we bade into corrections officers or, so they had to do a rule there, but twenty twenty-one was ninety-five thousand. Eight hundred ninety-two thou- eight hundred ninety-two dollars, twenty twenty-two was a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. In twenty twenty-three with another round going yet to come, a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. These are just some areas that I know we had passed some resolutions on, had did some discussion on where we were gonna save money and, uh. We obviously have not.
What, how are we gonna save on the food?
Um, well, the food, we, we went to cooks, uh, there's less inmates. We, this, again, food costs went up, I, I don't know, these are just some questions that, that haven't popped up. Um, that's a pretty big jump from ninety-five thousand to a hundred and thirty-six thousand with another round yet of, of costs.
Can I add on that?
Yeah, please.
Just cause I have experience with it and I own a bar and restaurant, uh, you know, basically over the last. Three to four years, we've seen an, an increase, you know, up to twenty-five percent in some of our food costs. Now, I'm not saying that, I don't know who's really working on our food cost, is, I don't know how many vendors we're using, you know, sometimes if you. Go all in with the vendor, you can save substantial money and I think that's something that we can look into, maybe try to save, but, you know, on average, um. Pretty much twenty percent increase over the last few years, just to the cost of food.
Right, these are lo- less numbers, again, these are just some things that we had talked about that kinda get ring, ring in my mind, doing some, uh. Thinking on some things that we were hoping that would, would save us money that obviously, uh, is not.
It did have a conversation with the undersheriff about the meals and there were substantially more meals, I guess, that they've done in the past year over the prior year as well, so. Compounding the inflation issue, more meals being prepared.
Because.
I think our population, I did do the, look at that, I think I spent more meals to that time.
Any other thoughts, ideas? Um, you know, with this new, this is us agreeing to move the money over from the ARPA funds too, which I don't think we've agreed on. The seventy-five thousand dollars from the attorney, for the attorney software, but any, any other? Comments, questions?
No, we haven't agreed on that, that's just a proposal.
I agree.
So that's all.
Commissioner Simmons? Anything? I mean, this was just put in front of that, this, this, I, I, this wasn't on the iPads, correct?
It's been, uh, on since yesterday and it's been radically updated all day as we do various things.
So I haven't had a chance to, to look at this, I worked all day.
When yesterday was a put on, cause I've been looking at it. I've been a little bit stopped, didn't, didn't see it.
Yesterday afternoon and it was posted.
I didn't.
You have anything to add? Go ahead.
Uh. We were to move the inmates all. Can we save enough and not touch the sheriff's office?
Well, right now it doesn't really save us because you're losing so much revenue by doing this. You're losing the roughly two hundred fifty thousand. From Osco to county, you're gonna lose your commissary, run the same amount of money, so it's not, it's not creating any, any real room. By doing that.
Figure, I figure, uh, a population of sixty, on average, not fifty, but sixty. Seven hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the year cost. Take that away from two point one. That's a little higher than commissary and out of county.
Right, but you still have to subtract that revenue now, that revenue doesn't come in anymore. So, yeah, it would look like if we just were able to cut the.
I'm saying the expense to do that is this.
Right, but you, you still have expense for running a lockup.
Okay, what if, what if I offer them forty dollars and they haul for us? Another hundred thousand.
He's still gonna have lockup.
Okay, alright. We don't know how much that is yet.
Well, I, I ran through the, just at the, again, the back of the napkin map and I'm still something up with the costing us actually about initial fourteen thousand dollars. Do that.
So no matter what, we're gonna tear into both apartments.
I, I see, yeah, I, I think that's true, uh, but again, my, I'm hedging on the staff reductions. I probably have more staffing there under the lockup scenario than maybe they need, but I don't know that. And I'm not comfortable myself making a proposal that's lower than that without finding, having some expertise come through to tell me it's okay.
Well, I'm just wondering, you, you lock up somebody over the weekend or two or three or whatever. And, and then they're taken away, they're taken away on Monday. Why do I need somebody sitting there watching an empty cell?
Probably don't, you probably then go to an on-call situation, but I, I'm not even sure how that would work. I, I don't know what the requirements would be from the state. I do know that we're gonna, somebody is arrested, we've gotta have somebody there to watch him.
Or, or they're transported straight to, to the other facility.
Is there any, any with this updated, uh, draft version, is there any groups, um. That we are contributing to that is not mandatory? Any, any at all?
One that comes to mind, the only one that comes to mind immediately is EDC. Get into that. Being your, likely your nine oh one, that, you know, what, what I'm seeing mostly in the, uh, allocations are areas that we have to fund. So that's your, your, uh, childcare fund, that's, that's your indigenous healthcare health department.
Any areas that, what we're, that we do not have to fund, is EDC on there?
Um, you're on here somewhere, trying to look. Nine oh one, nine fifty-eight, that's thirty-five thousand.
I, I, I would have thought that that would have been on, before we start looking at reducing our own staff, our own people, that, that. That should have been top priority and don't get me wrong, I support the EDC, Mr. Wilson. That's what I'm asking.
It's not a special fund, our allocation actually comes out of the general fund under the appropriations activity, nine oh one. And it is about the sixth line down.
What page, where are we at? So I know.
Very last page for the general fund. Six lines down.
Okay, so that in, six lines, I don't even want to. Yeah, that's twenty-five thousand, is there any other?
What about our MAC subscription, allowing the MAC?
I have twenty-five.
About eight thousand, yeah, that's what, what it is, we dropped it one time.
Oh, I can drop it again.
Yeah.
Would hesitate on that particularly with the opioid conversations that we're having, they're our primary resource at this point. Uh, we did talk at, uh, one of the last meetings about the use of opioid money to offset some of those administrative costs. Have an opportunity to dive into that yet, but, you know, that maybe is a source that we could use to fund them.
What do you mean?
Well, we're using them right now, we're relying on them pretty heavily, uh, to help guide us, yes, to help guide us on the opioid settlement expenditures. And I'd hate to just lose that. But if we can use, uh, leave some opioid funds reflecting that that's what we're using them for, is to come up with the plan that they've asked us to do. Uh, then that may be a permitted use.
Where, so the EDC is thirty-five thousand, where's the MAC, where's, where would I be looking for, like, stuff like this?
MAC would be.
Uh, pardon me?
Board of Commissioners activity, so that's, uh, just, couple of pages in to general fund. We have ones called memberships and subscriptions for the Board of Commissioners, the line item is eleven thousand. So you've got a MAC, um, membership and you do a new membership.
You're way at the beginning, I thought.
Yeah, that's what it was in O two, seven ninety.
There are some of these that we have that we gotta pay, can we cut their pay or we gotta give them what we gotta give them?
What are you looking at? What do you, what do you mean specifically?
Well, you said a bunch of them, we have to pay them.
We're talking about groups, correct? Do you mean the, the mandatory committees are groups that we, yes, that's what he's, that's what we're going over right now.
But some of them that we have to pay.
Is there an amount that's?
Right, that we could.
Yes, I get what you're asking.
We're going down. If we're not here, they get nothing.
It's mandated, are we giving the minimum necessary that is mandated to?
In, in the cases of like the health department. Indigenous, uh, defense, it's one, yes, it's the minimum, the king.
So, so this stuff is village, village, uh.
Correct.
Who served, so senior citizen village, that's a pass through.
Right, we have no control over some of it, but, but there's an excellent question, are, are we giving more than we need to get?
Right. Is there anything going on with the veterans that are a hundred percent still that we get reimbursed somehow from the state or from the federal government or something on that?
Veterans. Right.
Because the tax department did this, are they going to subsidize that with their funds?
Conversation and answering about that, but so far their answer has been, uh, uh, just had an update from MAC last Friday about that. And they're optimistic about some movement on that, but until it happens, you know, I would say we don't see it.
Um, I had asked, uh, Tim if we could find out, uh, a little district court. Where we're at and I'd be tempted.
Daniel's here.
Come on up.
I am Danielle Janice, Court Administrator for both Oremah and Roscommon Counties, as, yeah, lately. Um, I don't know what you guys have, what you don't have, so forgive me if I'm giving you information that you've already gotten. Um, I put together our caseload trends and all criminal cases originate in the district court. So it's also going to give you a picture of your entire county, it's not just the sheriff's department, so I just want, put that out there. Each one of these gives you anywhere from twenty twenty through projected twenty twenty-three of what our totals will be. If you'd like to pass those around. Um, in addition to that, I put together exactly what the district court is statutorily responsible for. So while you look at those case numbers, this is also what we have to provide the constituents of Oremah County. So that can be passed around as well. I do know that in two thousand sixteen, when positions were eliminated across the county. That it was probably having sent that our caseload that may be dived with. The, um, statutory amendments, because I really don't know how that office will possibly be functioning today, if they still have the case that they used to have. I think that if, right now, the liability is very high in the district court from what I have observed thus far. We have a Supreme Court auditor currently going through financial records that are very questionable, to be completely honest. Um, so, I mean, you have less and less staffing, those things aren't going to be caught. Um, I just really want to, I can't stress that enough, I, I'm trying my hardest to fix. The three bank accounts that the district court currently possesses, um, and I can't imagine if there was less staffing there to. Aid in rectifying that and then actually making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So it creates a liability, we have to pay the state a large chunk of what we collect. We don't do that and it's not, uh, there's no oversight, um, you have three years' worth of it. That puts Oremah County in, you know, a difficult position. Our caseload, um, in correlation with the reduction of inmates as far as misdemeanor cases. In twenty twenty-one, the state of Michigan, um, created a jail task force, well, implemented the jail task force recommendation. And that was that the assumption is all misdemeanors will, unless, unless it's an assault of crime. Be given fines and costs, no probation, no jail time, doesn't make the caseload go down at all. It makes it more difficult for really us to, um, collect one and to, um. Punish, I guess, right? Um, so now, instead of, for instance, people fail to pay traffic tickets. And their license would be suspended and that would provoke that individual to come in and pay off their traffic ticket so that they could get their license renewed. The state took that away from the court, so the only remedy for, um, getting money and traffic citations. Is to issue bench warrant for their arrest for speeding, um, I, I. Unfortunately, because dispatch here enters their warrants, I, I don't have a total, but I can tell you that my bench warrant totals in Roscommon County have. Um, I mean, quadrupled and therefore a hundred dollar speeding tickets, the county's not getting the money. And the court staff is having to validate and make sure that they're good every single month. So, um, I mean, once again, liability. You got warrants for their arrest.
If you don't get the money, do you still owe the state?
If we don't get the money, no, no, no.
The state will only get their share once you get it.
Correct, it has to be dispersed properly, yes.
What, what's current staffing there right now?
They have, well, it's on your sheets there, one, two, three deputy corporates and three magistrates. Those both counties.
Uh, where do all these cases come from?
As far as, uh.
How do you, how, how do you receive your cases?
Well, it could either be from an arrest that happens, well, the criminal round, traffic round, there's also civil cases. There's anything from landlord tenants to small claims.
But where does it begin at?
District court or on the side of a road when somebody's arrested and put in.
No, 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 you're living on the prosecuting attorney.
No, I'm not the pressing attorney, but they file tickets with the court.
Yeah.
Before the prosecutor may have reached your charges.
I understand, but a- all the criminal stuff and everything that comes from your, goes to the prosecutor.
No, traffic division does not, traffic division does not go through the prosecutor's attorney's office at all, unless somebody contests the charge. Traffic Division does not go through the prosecutor attorney's office at all unless somebody contests the charge, and I believe here. The prosecutor does represent agencies that aren't just the Sheriff's Department. It's agreement that they have. Um, but beyond that, the Traffic Division, no, no tickets go through the prosecutor's office. Criminal offenses. All go through the prosecutor's office inevitably if charges are issued. We could have a ticket, somebody arrested. A ticket's filed, we set bond. We, you know, begin our process and the prosecutor may not be able to issue charges for five months, waiting for labs to come back from the state of Michigan.
Understand that. So have have those traffic violations increased?
I would say, well, they've increased from last year. They've increased from when they took a large decrease. Two thousand nineteen was the last. Time I see that the the Oremah District Court with like ten thousand. But I don't, that correlates to a car. Position. I I don't know. I can't attest to the history of it.
It must have went down. I'm sorry. According to this, am I looking at the right line, the traffic misdemeanor?
We're going, yeah, she's talking about uh civil infractions. That's what you're referring to.
Thought you had traffic.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm talking about all the, all those tickets that used to be written out.
Um, speeding. Yeah, what you're referring to, those would be civil infractions.
Okay, where would that be on here?
That's the right below that, I believe, right? It's the first page I handed.
Okay, right here?
But they all went through.
Bottom half.
Yeah.
Yes, so so we were high because there was a uh position. Somebody in the room that's aware of their, the Sheriff's Department, didn't you guys have a a car that used to sit? Okay.
We had three cars.
Thank you. Thank you. So they had an influx of of civil infractions. At that time that did decline. And honestly, this year it's back, it's picking back up.
Went from forty four fifty five to sixteen fifty five to nineteen fifty nine. So there was a pretty big drop from twenty twenty to twenty.
Such a a large drop. Um. I would assume there should have been a drop in an employee of some sort because now you're not handling nearly as much.
Well, I'll ask you to keep flipping and you will see that there is an increase in drunk driving. There's an increase in drug cases. There is an immense increase in the probation load.
Now, who, how do you get that? Does it come up through the prosecutor's office?
In drunk driving, yes, a drunk driving case would inevitably.
So they're handling all these. All these that are coming to you, but yet they haven't had an increase in. And their performance, but they sent it all forward to you. They haven't had an increase in their personnel in their office.
There hasn't been an increase in the District Court either.
Where were the drunk driving? Just so I know what I'm looking at. I know nothing about this stuff.
Okay, it's okay.
But there was an increase.
Drug case, all that, that drug case all trends?
Draw and then below is drunk driving.
Oh, funny.
But there wasn't any breach just before Judge Noble left. He put another magistrate up there. Why do you need three magistrates now versus the three you used to have?
I I I can't attest to what.
No, that wasn't an additional person.
No, it wasn't.
An additional position.
She was.
It was an additional person went right upstairs for the prosecutor's office. Yes, it was.
No. No, Diane has done the court recorder. And she was added as a magistrate.
You, and then now we've gotten one reduction.
Well, yeah, there's a court. I I am running.
The only court administrator, so there's even one less.
Yes, yeah.
So.
Who's the one less?
Diane Rowe.
Diane, wow.
Diane Rowe.
You've taken her place, right?
Uh, yes, I I have taken on the responsibilities of two.
She was, she was one county.
She's being split.
I understand. I already know that, yeah.
Well, then.
So we kind of got a cap. But she's got two.
I understand why we have to have few magistrates.
I'm also magistrate and I can tell you that I've issued a handful of cases while I'm. Here trying to work out the administrative functions of the District Court, so that's with having three magistrates. I'm also dual um titled as a magistrate and I've helped out in that sense too. So I mean, the the work is there, the need is there.
That's up to the judge though. The judge names those and the judge is elected. We're not the judge's boss.
The budget is ours.
I get that too. But, you know, I mean. You want to tell the judge that. When she comes back from vacation or whatever that. I guess you could go ahead and tell the judge you disagree with her.
Our our job is a budget.
I think these are very valid conversations.
Hundred percent.
We're trying to figure out the exact functions of the District Court. I get that. I get that.
Any other questions? What was your question, Commissioner Simmons? Long story short, what's your question?
No, I just don't understand. I mean, the magistrate was up there and uh. All this. Has has dropped these. Civil infractions. I I just don't understand.
Well, I would also say that civil infractions are something that are automatically uploaded. For the most part from an officer's car, so there isn't a lot of data entry with a traffic ticket. Um, after ten days, if an individual just doesn't respond to the court, a default judgment automatically goes through the system. And they all fines and costs that. That workload is so minute of the civil infraction portion of the District Court.
I'll do a little more research. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask you just one question with with uh this art? Um. Video. The the use of video of uh.
Zoom or?
Yeah. Yeah, Polycom.
Yeah.
Is, all right, what? What's our percentage? Or is there a percentage or how often is it used?
I mean, we we utilize it the most we possibly can to reduce, um, you know. In the criminal realm, transporting inmates. So as long as the person has at one point or another been in Oremah County Jail to be fingerprinted. We can facilitate the rest of that case if they're lodged in another jail.
Uh huh.
Via Zoom. And they they do that to to the best of um their ability.
What's what? Stops it from happening?
Well, certain hearings um are inappropriate to be broadcasted. Um, anytime that you have in the felony realm of preliminary examination, that's that's really almost like a jury trial. You have witnesses. Um, victims that are testifying. It's inappropriate to to stream it, you know, online.
Oh, and so this is a. Well, it's public though in the courtroom too, right?
It is public. It is public, but then you walk out, you know, you're not allowed to videotape anything that's happening in the courtroom.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's that the the worry some of somebody replaying it or doing whatever, you know.
There's gotta be some privacy laws there somewhere.
Arrangements are done on.
Yeah, a lot of arrangements are. A lot of civil cases are handled via Zoom. I mean, really, it's it's being used more and more. The only downside of Zoom is the record. Um, it's not as easy for transcript purposes when you you don't have the ability to pull mics out and people from talking over each other like you are in the courtroom.
Right.
Um, so those types of of um hearings are what, you know, delays the judge in wanting. It to be via Zoom sometimes when she when she believes that it's going to be a can, you know, some contentious.
Okay. Okay, I'm just. But it's it's being used more and more though.
Yes, it is. And actually, um, the Supreme Court Administrative Office is pushing for it more and more.
Are they?
Yes.
Would you say twenty percent of the cases?
Well, um. I mean, honestly, I think that Oremah County does it more even than Roscommon County, to be completely honest with you, so. Maybe ten fifteen percent of the cases, but.
Okay.
And the more people get connected, it it will be easier to do that as well. One issue that we are encountering is because so many counties. Are trying to utilize the same machine. You you have a jail that has a Polycom system. The counties maybe a couple. But typically Northern Michigan, Mid Michigan, you have one Polycom system for. Every jail. Well, how many courts do you have that are conducting court at the same time?
Right.
That need to utilize it with another inmate.
Right.
That forces a lot of times us to have to do a writ and have that inmate brought there if we just can't make it work with schedules because that county doesn't have the availability. So now if they put more of those systems in, it may be easier to do.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sheriff, would you like to come out?
Roll us though.
Yeah, thank you.
And Mr. Howard. Not out. I guess I'm gonna ask for your opinion of of how you feel about these proposals.
Well. Hit the draft.
Oh, politely.
It it's a draft, okay? Um, I'm not gonna get real excited about it because it's only a draft. But if we do some hard moving around. You're talking eight totals of people. Out of the people's Sheriff's Department. It ain't my Sheriff's Department, it's the people's. You folks are gonna have to answer to the people.
Hmm.
And the bottom line is. You're gonna reduce services. You are definitely gonna reduce services. You take five, five inmates out of there. I'm sorry, you take five correctional officers out of there. We have to backfill. Transport. Um, you take three deputies off the road. We got the millage passed for four deputies and bring back night shift. You're gonna take three away from that. I can't go without night shift, which means I have to move people from days up the nights. It's gonna be a scheduling nightmare. Um, there's gonna be overtime. Unbelievable overtime. And I can't predict that right now because you got transport, you gotta fill the shifts. Um. It's it's not a good move. It it isn't because you're reducing services for the people that voted to. To have good, solid. Law enforcement, good, solid.
I guess I want an explanation just to verify. So we're going into talks of of overtime. If the there is no money, there's no money for overtime. How how does that work then? Is it? Is how 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 does this work?
Well, if there's no money for overtime, then the overtime cannot happen. Uh, and if it does happen, then we've got to be back here at the board to talk about what but the consequences for doing that. Uh, transport, I'm just doing the math uh this morning, you know, this budget proposed is. What is equivalent to, you know, a non-call employee but working about thirty six hours a week on transports? Um, I don't know how long it takes to transport from point A to point B, but that seems like that that's enough. But I I don't think I am, uh, just in terms of thirty five hours a week, you think about that, that's a full-time employee. Uh, and in this case, we're talking about on-call people who are, you know, what, two, three-hour commitments, whatever that. You know, back and forth might be. So I, you know, no, it's not going to be easy. Yes, there will be some, uh, you know, long hours spent working on scheduling and and figuring out where best to place the resources. Uh, but yeah, frankly, we just don't have the funding.
Uh. Again, I had the last thing I want to do is cut anybody. I I.
It's true with everybody, I think.
Agreed, but. I I guess we we've been going over this budget now, what, for three weeks? Pretty close to it, it seems like. I guess i- if looking at where. We can cut any direction helps. Again, we just dropped thirty. Hopefully, we discussed cutting thirty five thousand dollars from the EDC. Wherever we can cut is greatly appreciated. Things looking at this food cost, has has that been looked at, looked at? Overtime, we talked about that last week. You know, I know we're approving washing cars. Now the inmates are on tethers. Can they do it? Like any line item that that you're able to look at? Not that we want to, but we need to. I would rather do this. Than than eliminate jobs.
I appreciate that.
The other thing is is tickets and and I know I I I understand we had a lot of a a lot of tickets in the past. With the previous sheriff. I I know your thoughts and feelings on that and I don't disrespect that, but if that's going to. Save some jobs that we're willing to put a vehicle on on seventy five, three days a week, like something somewhere. So we don't have to cut jobs. Uh, what what can you guys come up with? Uh, is has there been thoughts on that? These are just simple little line items. I understand that, but every penny right now counts.
Well, the the biggest issue with the tickets is that uh you just heard that. More likely, they're not gonna pay their tickets. Theirs is their license will not be suspended. Uh, it's softer on crime now, you know. Everywhere, the whole, the whole country is softer on crime. Um, sentencing diversions, there's just no more people going to jail. That's huge. That's that's a problem for us. Um, if I take, if I take a car and you put it out on I seventy five. That reduces the call time for a complaint. And and then especially if you're gonna, if you're gonna cut three deputies. And then I stick a car out there. Okay, that's four deputies. You might as well, you might as well write that guy off on I seventy five because he's not gonna be answering complaints. He's not, and and if we, if we don't do a a just service. And to be responsible for being there first, being there fast. People are gonna wonder where our cars is at.
I have a comment. I think that there's a balance. I think that there's a balance. I mean, either either we're gonna have a really tough choice of of eliminating some officers or. Taking one of these officers and sticking them on seventy five, and if there's a call, hopefully it's near seven. I mean, there there's gotta be a balance here.
Are you talking to stick one out there after all these cuts are made?
No, I'm telling you, we don't have to make them.
Not to cut.
Like, give us something on your end so we don't have to do this.
I don't, I don't. Think the numbers out there will sustain what we're what we're looking at for the cuts with tickets.
Are you willing to give us anything is my question, I guess.
I would have to sit down with my under sheriff and go over some things and 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 see what we actually can do, but.
I have a comment. Yep, I'm sorry.
I understand where you're coming from about the services and keep everybody safe. Where we're gonna get the money to pay for that? Where are we gonna get the money to pay for that? We have gone over this, gone over this, gone over this. There isn't any money. Something's gotta go. And be it you, be it. Up at the courts, be it us, be it whoever.
Did we, did we look at, and I don't want to throw it out there, but you know what? I'm going to. Did we look at taking one person from every department rather than coming and gutting our department? Did we look at that? Did we look?
It's already been done here. There's already been cuts done in this county building. At the county building. There used to be six of the registered officers, three in there now.
I I I agree with you.
Officers taking cuts.
Sheriff, I I agree. I I agree with you. Like, have have we, and and we're hoping that the administrator has has did that in these department head meetings, has went over all the staffing that knows that people are, everybody's at their minimum capacity. I don't know that.
I understand all that. But there's gonna be huge, you've cut, you've cut aid out of here. The repercussions of that in itself, what we have to do, the back, the backfill. The the void here is gonna reduce. Services on the road. Our patrol time is gonna reduce. And if we, if we want to get a millage passed next August. It's gonna be difficult. And 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 we need to know that. We need to be upfront with that, be 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 honest with ourselves. If we do anything like this drastic like this. Our services is gonna be depleted. And we are, we are in trouble. And if we don't, if we don't get that millage passed. And I think we were working, I I think we were working. Towards getting it passed. I think the people were really on board with what we were doing there. If we reduce anything. The substantial. We're taking that chance and 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 I'm here to tell you. You've seen what happened last last week. There's there's plenty more of that coming. With my deputy get rammed. There is, we've got a minimal illness. Problem in the country.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but but unfortunately, I that millage, I think right now we need to focus on right now. At versus next August. I I right now, we we need this in any way that we can balance this and then move forward with next year's planning and hopefully three years forward. Would be great, but right now it's it's this.
I just, I just, I I can't, I can't. And when I say I, I'm speaking for the people. Because I work for the people.
What do you think we work for?
We can't. We can't.
Answer my question.
Coming right after me.
Uh, Commissioners.
You're coming after me and you're coming after Sheriff's Office that that provides good solid.
We went out and Commissioners went after other people beforehand and didn't come after you.
Commissioner Simmons.
Like I said, this is a draft. Um. I'm I'm just, I'm I'm just telling you that if you reduce these services and it will, it will reduce it greatly.
Agreed, I.
We're we're, we are in trouble. With crime in this, in this community, big time.
I don't just, Commissioner Simmons, I don't disagree, but funding, we have to be able to support it. And again, looking at these numbers, I I I'm greatly disappointed in in food cost and the medical. All these numbers that have went up were was very shocking to me. Unfortunately, I I I. I was shocked by these numbers. I was.
Can I say something?
Please.
Um. So Sheriff, I understand your frustrations. We're we're all extremely frustrated and these are the last things we want to do, but. Um, Commissioner David brings up a good point, and I know you said you're gonna talk with the under sheriff. But. But, you know, I, and, and I, I disagree with you the fact that, yeah, some people are not paying their tickets, but there's still a lot of people that. Will pay their tickets. And if, if we can find any way that we can take one of those li- line items, for example, we take a, a deputy. And have between the quarters of exit two oh two to two fifteen. You know, you're still there, they're obviously, their main focus, if they get a call, it's not long for them to get to thirty-three, to get onto the main drag here. So they can get there and still cover a decent area, you know, we're just looking at if, if you could talk with the undersheriff and. You know, there is a, a really good possibility to really create some good revenue there, if we were consistent with a car, and this car is not just gonna be there for. Writing speeding tickets, and they can still cover a good section for calls. So I, I think that's what we're really trying to get at, is if. You could really dive into that and, and see that, when we were, when we're asking that without having to reduce staff, if we think we can really put a good plan in place. To generate more money off of that, and I think with the way that we're set up there, with that corridor and the main roads coming there, we still can cover it, uh, you know, a good part of the county with that. That officer.
Well, my biggest, my biggest concern with that. Is I lived it, I worked it, I was out there, big calls come in, I'd shoot down a two oh two and shoot up that way, I've done it, I know what you're talking about. But the biggest thing is. Is that that car will be setting out on the slab. For twelve hours, not being seen in these inner. Streets. Now, if, if, if I'm gonna vote for a millage. If I see that car go by my house, just cruising by, that's gonna alert me like, oh, patrol's out here. I'm gonna vote for it because I see it, they're, they're at work, but if we don't have that car doing that. It's a chance we're taking.
Well, I understand that, but also, a chance are taken is. If, if we can formulate a plan where we really think we could generate that money, we don't have to lay off deputies. And I think if we educate the people, right, and you know, we're, your social media has got a lot more consistent. We let the people know, the people that know are watching, people that vote, people that care, they're watching, they're paying attention, well, why are we doing this? Well, we're putting this deputy out on seventy-five now, so we don't have to lay off jobs.
Well, also to keep. That area somewhat safe too, I drive it, we drive fast, very fast, and that's not safe. But I, again, just looking for some type of, of adjustments here, I, I think there's some more serious line items that can be looked at before we start, before we start. Uh, laying people off, I, I think everybody, again, needs to take a hard look. Um, I just feel like people are, are dragging their feet, um, I, I. I don't, I don't, uh.
The, the biggest thing is. We're at full staff. And, and we're moving forward, and then, and then when I get chopped off at the knees, when you're talking eight. That hurts, that hurts, and, and then, and then, you know, you, you're, you're talking, you're talking three deaths. If one of them could go to the road and keep, keep this whole thing the way it's moving, we can look at that. But I don't, I'm not so sure that would happen, uh, because the ticket, that ticket revenue isn't, isn't gonna save us here by what I'm looking at.
No, I agree, but, but, but numerous items, i- if we're at full staff for the first time in a very long time, cut your overtime in half. We, we haven't adjusted that.
We have, we.
We didn't cut from last year to this year, it's the exact same. With the two lieutenants, which is a substantial amount, fifteen or twenty-five thousand.
And the reason why they were high is because they were, they're, they were moved out of their desk to a training situation, training the new ones to come in, so we're gonna get full staff. That's why they, that's why they accumulated so much overtime, they're back on their desks now.
Agreed, but, but, but again, we're at full staff, and we're just looking for little tweaks to show that we're, we're, we're trying here, take the overtime, cut it in half. Look at all the departments, we're looking at any, any savings will help overall, so we don't have to eliminate jobs. I don't think any of us here want to do that. Um, but, but we need some help, or that's what we're gonna have to do. And again, that's the last thing I wanna do, I'm gonna make that very clear. Um, I don't wanna close a jail. Um, I don't wanna eliminate jobs, but, but we, we need to look, please do some more digging of where we can save money, everybody.
Just a rough figure, I mean, this was a very rough figure that, uh. Lieutenant Howard and I came up with. The, the lost revenue, if you close that jail down, just the lost revenue, and I'm, and I'm thinking that's a little low. Is seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, almost seventy, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of revenue. That opening, with that open, that's what's bringing in, into that.
I, I don't think that's the direction, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I don't think that's the direction that's being talked about right now.
I just wanted to get that out there.
That's fair, that's fair, um, a- again, if, if, if everybody, I need to look this over, I just got this today, um, I'm definitely.
And I just, I just got it today too, I just looked at it.
Yeah, so that gives all of us very, very little time, um. Are we comfortable with all the departments' or staffing levels, Tim, I, I, I guess you know more about that than, than me, I know.
I, I can, I think say with certainty that the staffing that you see, particularly in your other elected offices, is already at the minimum. Uh, capacity, you know, the. Test for this that was defined by the Supreme Court is the barely serviceable level. And, but they never defined what that was, but these departments, uh, we've got one person in department, that's a third of the staff. In some cases, half. Uh, and they just can't afford to have that kind of a, a reduction in their resources and maintain their levels of service, so, you know, in the short answer, my opinion is, yes, they're already at that. Minimum service on the level.
Is all, all departments currently at thirty, or thirty-five hours, is it?
Despite, is everybody at thirty-five, exception of corrections and, and, uh. Road patrol where they're at forties, yeah, corrections you might, well, it's that funny thing with their swings for shift and everything else, but they're forties. Everyone else is thirty-five.
Commissioner Senator David. Um, there were cuts before, and, uh, the first floor at the county building took the cuts. And they are at bare minimum right now, just serviceable. Strength right now. If you take away anymore. The service won't be there, I'll guarantee you that.
I don't disagree, it does feel like these are the, the, the two areas that we're targeting, it a hundred percent feels that way, and, and I can't imagine how you feel, so.
But before, I'm sorry, but before. It was always the first floor of the county building, it always has been the first floor of the county building, they can't take any more cuts. Someone else is gonna have to start. And divvy up and take some part of these cuts, they can't be that first floor anymore, there's nothing left.
Well, um. Can we, do we have to, for, I, I don't know if you wanna call it a hiring freeze, but I know it was discussed, and then nothing became of it at last week's meeting, um. For a hiring freeze or for any new hires, uh, before a position is, is filled to come through the Commissioners?
Uh, if you'd like to do that, I'd like to put it right into appropriation resolution, so it's right there for everybody to see, these are the rules of the budget, if you need to hire, you've got to come to the board. So we put it right in that resolution, so I mean, it's, you know, it gets us the force of policy at that.
I think of where we're at right now.
Other positions that are already allocated to that?
I, I think any position, any position.
I have a comment.
At, at least then we're aware, it's brought to us, we, we know more of what's going on.
My comment is this, uh. In a lot of these offices, uh. We, a lot of us, don't even know what goes on in those offices and why they need the people they have. But the first floor has been cut considerably. Um, you may wanna go in there and talk to each one of those elected officials and find out exactly what their job is and what they're responsible for and what it takes to make that happen. And if they don't have those people, what's gonna happen to that service that their office is giving? Cause I know from being Commissioner before, they have been cut. And I don't know where else they can be cut.
These are not optional services, these are statutory, the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, these are statutory, they are by law. We must provide these services, it's no, it's no option. They can't just say, oh, I don't wanna have a clerk's office. We can't do that.
There go the elections.
There go the elections, the elections, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, guys, oh, go ahead.
Can I say just to clarify a few things? There's a talk of the jail being a hundred and forty-four bed jail, which it is, full operating capacity is one fifteen. It's just, if you go over that, it's a standard for much longer time, when things start to break down, so full operation is actually a one fifteen bed. That's in the policy over there, that's from the state, transport officers. Um, equal about two full-time officers. The part-timers that you're paying sixteen dollars an hour, they do about two full-time officers' hours throughout the year, I went through.
Wow.
All the dailies, there's not just the two guys, I have several, but it's an on-call thing, they call them eleven o'clock at night. Gotta run one to the hospital, I have to get somebody in, otherwise I have to pay a corrections officer overtime to come in and do it. So they equal about two full-time hours with the staff for the part-time transport. Um, we had, when we had the staffing analysis, I believe after that analysis, they added the two officers from ten to ten. Which cover the short days throughout the week, cause otherwise, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you're gonna have eight hours of overtime, you have to fill each day, cause each person has to leave. Otherwise, you're paying them an eighty-four hour schedule. If they don't get, if they do their, their seven-twelves, it's eighty-four hours, it'll be scheduled for seven-twelves if you're at minimum staff. In two thousand nine, when I worked in twenty-six to thirty-bed jail right here at the sheriff's department, I worked with twenty-two officers that did full-time hours. For a twenty-eight to thirty-bed place, right now, today, we have seventy-eight. And I have twenty-three employees over there. There's one extra employee for that jail, and I was working with right back here when I started in two thousand nine. If you cut this, if you cut five officers under there, I'm gonna have overtime, I don't, I don't even want an overtime budget. Because they each get two hundred and fifty-six hours a year vacation, every time one of them takes a day off, they're just gonna be rotating, taking days off. Still have it up this week, this person will work today, and you'll have it up that week, that person will come over and work his day, cause there's nobody extra. To work.
Do you have any resolution, any ideas for?
No, I'm just, uh, my resolution is, the, the jail is bringing in money for what it can as a jail, jails aren't made to make money. If I can find another county that would send us inmates, that would help. But as far as running the overtime budget, I don't think that's gonna save you money either in the long run.
What do you suggest?
That's what I'm asking, give us.
I don't know, I suggest I'm running a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and forty-four bed jail, when we had a thirty-bed jail with almost the exact same staff. But you wanna take twenty-eight percent of my housing staff that's going back there and taking care of the inmates away.
So is there other costs that you're able to cut by really digging in deep?
The biggest cost I can cut is by keeping the overtime down, which I think we've been doing, I'm finally fully staffed. So when somebody takes a day off, I don't fill it unless I have to, unless. I'll run a little short on days to not fill the overtime.
So you went line item by line item through this, and there's no other.
I have to go line item by line item, but I don't order a lot of that stuff, like the paper supplies, the food, I went through the food thing, cause I did get a call from the undersheriff. And we had served more meals than the previous year, it's probably the same thing with medical, we probably had more inmates this year than we have last year.
Are they possibly, and this is just a question that came to my mind when I saw those costs, because you had two, I'm gonna say women, cause I, I know two of the names, I don't know if you had a, uh, cooks. That probably did a lot of home-cooked meals, I, I'm thinking like cheaper meals like goulash, like bigger things versus pre, pre-made.
I think, I think the cooks now is Perry Ealing, he's pretty much, I, he does a lot of the homemade stuff.
That was my question, are they, are they cheaper?
Yeah, they're doing the homemade pizzas and, yeah, he does a lot of homemade stuff, yes.
Homemade pizza's not cheap.
Well, it's better on the flour, it's like he does the flour himself, I mean, he, he makes it from scratch, I don't know.
Uh, Commissioners, well, see, did you have something?
Yes, question on food, so who does the exact food ordering then, when it comes up, working with the supplier and. They do the.
They do the actual order, keep track of their inventory and then do the.
So who's double checking, and, and because of this budget, like, who's, who's checking to see that they're checking for, for cheaper locations? For ordering for.
Month and a half.
I know, I'm just, I'm asking a question, who does that?
But I don't know, I've been planning most of my time working with us, and you guys, more than being acquainted with everything at the jail at this point.
That's fair. That's fair. Other questions? Thank you, very much.
Just, just, my door's open, any, any folks wanna come see me, please do. Please do, thank you.
I, I, I need to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, undersheriff is on vacation?
Yeah, he'll be back next week, he'll be back Monday, you know, and I, I have not called him, and I, I refuse to call him because he needs a vacation. He's been working very hard for, so.
That's fair.
We'll just, we'll just wing this until we get into, get back into it, thank you, Monday with him.
Thank you.
Well, guys, I, I personally would like to resume, I, I can't make a decision, I haven't had an opportunity to look this over.
No.
Um, I, our deadline is when exactly?
Week from the.
Number thirtieth.
Well, thirtieth, you wanna come in on a Saturday?
I don't care, whatever it takes.
Mister David, I've.
Pardon me? Oh, go ahead.
Um, so last week we pulled off for, uh, MSU extension.
Oh, yeah.
Wanted to get some more information, Julie's here tonight.
I don't know if we can, can we discuss that?
You can do that, uh, otherwise, we're meeting tomorrow, and it's on the agenda tomorrow.
It's on the agenda tomorrow?
Yeah, but it's budget related.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's the only rule, this is called for a budget meeting, that's what we told the.
Well, yeah, that, yeah, that's why, that's why I brought it up, cause.
I guess before, before we get there, an- another meeting, cause I, again, I don't think any decisions are gonna be made tonight or tomorrow night, can we look at a, a meeting time? For next week?
Yeah.
I can do any evening.
About.
Monday, the twenty-fifth?
Monday.
Night.
Monday night, yeah, you said, your, your nights work for you?
Yeah.
Commissioner Simmons, she's looking at her journal.
I have mental health board meeting at five o'clock, Monday.
How long will that take?
As long as I stay.
How about if you, how about if you dismiss yourself from that and come to this meeting, is it, is it something you really need to be at? Cause we need, really need.
Heck, you missed the airport meeting today.
Well, I had to, hello. And I, and I'm sorry I didn't call, but.
Can you, can you miss the mental health meeting?
What time we're gonna have our meeting?
Five thirty.
Thirty. I'll go for a half hour.
Yes, guys, five thirty Monday. Okay, go ahead, you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolfie, I guess, is there something else you wanted to discuss?
Well, we have Julie here, and it's regarding budget.
Okay. Julie, wanna come on up?
Sure. I was planning to come tomorrow as well.
You wanna wait till tomorrow?
We'd like to see you tomorrow too, though.
That's right.
All right.
And the next day.
All right, I, I did do some preparation today, so I'm, if we wanna talk about it, I.
Go ahead.
I'm curious about what questions you have, I, um, so.
But, well, my biggest question is what our expense, our taxpayers of Oldham County is paying for MSU extension? I understand they're paying mill rent here at the annex, but we also have costs that we're paying, correct?
And the costs we're paying are, um. You know, attributed to what the clerical person does for our building inspections department and for planning and zoning, so she's receptionist, does some other odd incidents for them. And I think the grand total on that, I think between the two departments is fifteen thousand dollars, five thousand of that's out of planning and zoning. And it's transferred over to the MSU extension fund. Um, we, we, obviously, we have the contract and the millage coming in supporting. MSU's costs.
Right.
Okay, from planning and zoning, not. Not building.
Building and planning.
Yeah, they, they both are.
Yeah.
Right.
What was that, uh, Karen?
The planning budget, which is part of your one oh one, is contributing ten thousand and really insuring your other counties, the special funds would be being five thousand.
And then MSU is contributing fifteen thousand, or how is this working, I guess, I'm confused as well.
Funds are being transferred to MSU extension to support that clerical position.
They're being, they're being transferred into the fund, they don't go to the university.
Right.
Be clear about that.
And that individual's only getting fifteen thousand dollars?
No, she's paid for, um. Uh, point nine five of an, of a full-time equivalent, is that correct?
Somewhere in there, maybe.
Yeah.
Point nine five coming out of the extension fund.
Right. So the, the millage fund that comes in, fund two seven three, is that right?
Maybe.
Okay, um, that's the number that I keep looking at when I'm pulling up the budget, um. The projected revenue for twenty twenty-four, uh, is equivalent to around a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, the projected.
Hold on just a second, Brenda, Commissioner Simmons.
Shut the door, we shut the door.
We can't, can you ask him to move?
Sorry, the projected expense when I worked on the budget was around a hundred and sixty-one, and there's some change with that as well. Um, so, I, I know I completed the budget worksheet, but I can't find it in my email, but when I did look at the reported. Special fund, it's in the special fund budget that was attached to the, um, to the, um, to your packet today. If that is.
Two seventy-three.
Two-seventy-three, yes.
Okay. I, I was misinformers to be a blunder on my part, I thought we were paying for a, a full-time employee wages benefits.
Is that the county was?
Correct.
The, the millage fund pays for at least fifty percent or point five of a full-time equivalent. Or, I mean, yes, yes.
We pay point nine-five. Oh.
No.
Of the.
She is, she is employed for point nine-five, of which the millage fund for extension pays for point five of that, so. Little more than half, because she's not a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Point nine-o, the county pays for.
No, point four-nine.
Point nine, point nine-o, point nine-o, it's all the same, point nine.
Point four, no, am I?
Point four-five.
Yes.
Point four.
I said point four-nine, yes, sorry.
Four-five.
Half, the half of.
Roughly half.
And half.
Yeah.
Under a hundred, under half.
Right.
I agree with that, I agree with what's being done.
Would you pay that?
I'm fine with that.
Would I pay the other point four-five?
Yeah.
If it was coming in through the millage fund, yes, we would pay, we would, we would have her full-time just working for extension, yes. She also does do tasks for the building department and for planning and zoning, um, and she can take on more tasks if if those are designated specifically to her. She helps people that come in, find the right.
I, my, I'm just asking to help our budget, if we didn't have the paid point four-five, if.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have another, I don't have another fifteen thousand coming in through a special fund that I can allocate.
You don't have that coming through the millage, you don't have enough in the millage?
I don't have, no, no, I don't, no, I don't.
But I mean, that's not, uh, the, the building and zoning have the funds to support that. And especially building, building does.
So is is planning and zoning a, a, a general fund?
Yes, it's really a general fund transfer, but it's put in the planning, uh, activity, so you can see it, that's why we're, we're doing.
So we took it out of planning, put it into building. Because that's a special.
It's a special. Mm-hmm, right, and.
I can relieve, I can relieve the general.
If, yes. The short answer is yes.
And that money's there, so why don't we do that?
You can do.
I mean, they're the ones doing the work for them.
Sure, the, the philosophy between, uh, splitting it somewhat, between planning and zoning and building was that they'll both utilizing it, so they both should be chipping in. That was the only philosophy that.
Well, they're both gonna use it and one can chip in.
They should pay for it, their revenues.
Yeah.
Definitely exceed their expenditures, they have a fund balance. Am I wrong there?
And it's, it's justified, I mean, it's, it's what's great about it, is you're not.
Yes, yeah.
Doing a shell game here, it's, it's true.
Right, right, so it's kind of an easy.
Adjustment that should have been made.
Easy adjustment.
Just take ten grand.
Well, that's what I.
Ten grand.
That feels good. But what, right, but that's my question, is why hasn't that been done, like, we're to this point, why hasn't this little stuff been done?
Getting done right now and, I know.
But it wouldn't have.
Well.
If you wouldn't have sparked the question. That you were wrong on. But, but yeah, right, but yeah, right, I mean.
Yeah.
Thirty-five thousand dollars on the EDC, I mean, if we're looking at eliminating jobs and cutting back, like, why has this not been done? I.
Well, then what do you wanna cut out of your page?
What page? I I haven't had an opportunity to look at these pages.
Well, it's your regular budget page, I mean, for the commissioners, one-on-one, one-on-one.
Let's look at it, let's look at it.
What do you wanna cut?
I said, let's look at it, sir.
Okay.
What page are you on?
Sorry, I repeat. It'd be on the second page.
I'll come tomorrow night too.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
That was, uh, very helpful.
Thank you, Julie.
You're at what page? Let's look at the commissioners.
Well, second page.
County Commissioners. We just talked about eleven thousand dollars for MAC, which I I, um, training, I, I don't think we need any training, do you guys? But if there's, that won't be this year, we're all here till next January.
Already know everything, we got it all.
Unless we could.
Training for it.
You guys, is there any training you foresee, Tim?
There's training all the time that goes on, yeah, it's just a matter of what.
For Commissioners, have, is there been any training in the past since? Hold on, Commissioner Simmons, since, uh. Since the new Commissioners are on board and will be on board till next year, there's no new, new training for new Commissioners, correct?
Not the new Commissioner, but like MAC does, uh, two conferences here that are training, so.
Is, is there anybody that's, any Commissioners that's went to that in the past?
There's one coming up right now, I had interest, but not because of costs and stuff like that, so, you know.
So are you guys comfortable eliminating five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I am.
Uh.
I'll cut the per diems.
Per diems.
That's five grand.
What are you looking at?
Supervising, fourth, fourth line down.
Supervisor per diem. Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on those.
Well, those departments that pay, this would not be, this would not affect the, the, uh, a committee that pays somebody already. But this would be out of the general fund.
I did, uh, turn one in and I think out of that I got two, for my first one ever in my third term, and I think I got two, two meetings were reimbursed. So I don't have a problem cutting that five thousand dollars.
Due to financial woes, I haven't turned in any and didn't plan on it.
Somebody else turned in any per diems?
I haven't turned any in, I planned on it, but I guess I won't.
I mean, it's not gonna make a break, believe me.
Uh, you're probably not turning any per diems, are you? So there you go, there's five thousand dollars.
Okay, there you go, I can't say that we.
Anything else, Commissioner Scott?
No, that's fine with me.
Uh, office supplies, what, what are office supplies for Commissioners, I've never turned anything in.
Nobody ever gave me an ink pen, I don't know.
Oh, you take that out of ours?
No, I don't do anything, I'm saying these.
I go to other offices of revenue.
All this paper.
I guess, what's the three hundred dollars?
Let's charge the building department.
I'll just hear it up quick.
Well, that's what I just, that's what I said.
Is, is it come out of here, does it come out of our budget?
I can't tell you exactly what it is, but you've only been seventy-eight dollars for the whole year, so it's, whatever it is, it's not huge.
We can reduce it.
So where would this come out of for, for paper, that's all that we get from.
Actual, uh, one of the county general expenses covers like the paper.
So I don't see what the three hundred bucks would come out of.
Well, you can cut it, just take, take the three hundred and cut it in half. Hundred and fifty.
And that eliminated, we don't even know what this being utilized for.
Seventy-eight this year.
For what?
We can look that.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you.
I think got it. We'll figure it out. What's the other, uh, advertise, training we got rid of, advertising expense?
That's like your legal notices.
So we need that.
We have earrings, we have.
Okay. And then MAC, I guess, are we leaving that eleven thousand dollars, I I, I think that is the only direction right now we really have with the opiate. Uh, funding, and I can't imagine paying legal, uh, we need serious direction on that.
Well, I like what Tim said, I mean, I think we've discussed this, I mean, we're spending time and energy, Tim is spending time and energy. Uh, we now no longer have Kelly, so Tim's gonna have to be more involved, or somebody to help, you know, get that set up, so we should get compensated for that.
Some, somewhere.
So I think that line item should be, should come out of opioid funding.
The eleven thousand for MAC?
That's what I think.
Or you leave it here and then we transfer out of opioid into the general fund to offset that.
We could do that.
I'd like to see it here, because that's, that's where I'd expect them to look for it, cause we were even done.
See, I think it would be in the opiate, just because that's, that's, uh, A- Amy, isn't that her name, Amy?
Amy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's been asked.
She has been. Green. There's our, there's our page, anything else there, guys? What was your question, insurance, Commissioner Simmons? Health insurance?
There's some health insurance in there, I didn't know where that.
It's zero.
It's zero now, but it wasn't last.
So you, your term started in January, but the fiscal year started in October, and always we had a commissioner that was actually paying in for dental and vision. So we have to show the expense, if we do here, revenue came in, I don't know if that came right out of who's.
Oh, I know John.
Or what it was. Nobody's taking any of it now, but.
Okay, I guess I don't have. I personally would like to take a, a look at this and meet again on Monday. If anybody has any other ideas, can come up with any savings anywhere, please. Even if it's, even if it's us washing our own cars, anything, anything, anything will help.
Wash my own car.
Anything else on the budget, guys, before we go to public comment?
Oh, I'm, I'm good.
Public comment in the room. Probably comment on the phone.
Uh, this is Jeff Nichols from the Veterans Office, earlier, did you have a question for the Veterans Office, I thought you had mentioned us.
Uh, Brenda?
Think that question was about Memorial Day or something.
Say what?
You wanna know about Memorial Day or?
No, it was, it was a question about a millage, but no, I think we gotta clarify, Jeff, thanks, she doesn't have any further questions on that.
Okay, I just wanted to check, cause I couldn't hear very well on my phone.
Nope, thank you very much. Any public comment on the phone? Hi, Paul, I hope you're having a good, a good, uh, vacation, and you should not be listening to this meeting, you should be on vacation. We're meeting again Monday, five-thirty. Motion to adjourn. Okay. Except. Adjourn, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Well, we'll see each other all tomorrow.